Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, regular meeting on June 13th at 6:00 P.M. Patsy, can we have the call order?
Yep.
The roll call, I'm sorry.
Harry Pearson?
Here.
Melissa Bass?
Here.
Penny Zirker?
Present. We do have a forum with three of the five current members present. Planning and zoning board will allow public comment on any item on the agenda at the time each item, agenda item is considered by the board. With the exception of ministerial items, that is the approval of agenda minutes, informational items for ceremony or proclamation, emergency items and other items for which there is no opportunity to be heard. The board may limit citizens' comments to three minutes. At this time, we'd be happy to take public comments. If you want to make public comments, there are some cards outside the room. You need to fill those out and provide those to Patsy. I don't think we have anything for general public comments at this time. Is there anyone who's wanting to complete a card for general public comments? Alright. We have no old business under new business, approval of meeting minutes. The minutes were sent out and you each have a copy on your place. Do we have any changes to the minutes from April 24th meeting? Any changes? May I have motion to approve the minutes? Motion to approve? Second? My allow the second? Second for me this? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye. Aye, opposed, like sign. Minutes are approved unanimously. Our second item on the agenda tonight is the quasi judicial and republice hearing, consideration and recommendation regarding site plan approval for the city of Cape Canaveral multi-generational facility, located at 7920 Orange Avenue per city code ordinance in section 110-223, city of Cape Canaveral, the applicant. Mr. Dickie, I believe you have a presentation for us on this item?
I do, Madam Chairperson. I will jump right into it. As always, I'd like to start with a series of slides. And the first one, the first several are really just to kind of orient us to the site. We're kind of, at this point, our perspective, we're kind of out over the ocean looking to the northwest. You can see the site is demarcated or the actual footprint of the building is indicated here with that red star. You can see north, our north arrow is up here. Astronaut Boulevard is over here, running up towards the port. This particular road here is North Atlantic. Trying to give you just a few more landmarks. I think everybody's pretty familiar with this. This is the Canaveral City Park. This is a site a little closer, shot a little closer. Again, the mark is, the site of the building is located with a red star. The entire site is not going to be redeveloped, but a large portion of it will. Those portions that will remain is going to be this particular field here. And pretty much the rest of the property is going to be redeveloped. And we'll get into that here in just a little bit. But this field will be going away. I believe these two buildings have already been relocated. I know at least that one is. You can see currently there is an outdoor basketball court. Those will be removed as well. Also, I want to point out that, and we'll get into this a little bit more in depth, but I want you to point out the parking. There's really, I'll call it on-street parking. There's a row of on-street parking here on the west side of the property. And there's also one over here, a small piece, a small amount of parking over here currently. Notice there's no parking on the north or south property lines. Actually, that's not true. I think there is some right in here. Yeah, there is some right in here. Yes, there are parallel, correct. You can see down here that we do have, there is some existing park facilities down in this location. If I can get my arrow to work, there we go. We've got a small path. There's some outbuildings as well. A playground? Thanks, Gustavo. I think you should come up here and sit with me. Yeah, come on up. If you want to jump in and add anything.
Yeah, just to add to what you said. The playground, the existing playground which you see on that southeast corner, that will stay. So when development starts, although that might be fenced, that will remain as part of phase one.
And again, this view is really, we're kind of from the northwest looking southeast. And on this photo, I want to point out a couple of buildings that we're going to be referencing here shortly. In particular, this one right here is a multifamily. I'm not sure if it's an apartment or condo. Somebody might know in the audience. But it is a multifamily property, as well as this one here, two stories. These are some townhouses. I think there's five of them here that we approved, a couple, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago. Really nice redevelopment project. Okay, this is, let me go back one. I'm going to go through this more street-level photos here, four or five of them. The first one is going to be taken from right here. And we're going to be looking north that way. We're going to be looking down Orange Avenue. Next one will be taken from here, looking down Monroe towards the east, towards the ocean. Next one will be down in the southwest corner, we'll be looking north. And the final street level will be down here in this corner on Orange Avenue. We'll be looking north up, well, actually, we're going to kind of be looking across the site. So I just wanted to kind of give you a feel for where the next four photos are going to be from. So, jump right into it. Looking north, and I wanted to add a few of these because we need to kind of get a perspective of what's surrounding. I know we're here talking about site plan tonight. And it's really, it's really not a discussion about compatibility and whether the development fits into the, you know, the surrounding properties. We'll talk about that in just a second. So, but I think it just gives us a sense of the community and what's going on, so. This is over on the northeast corner of the property, looking, again, looking east to the beach, down to the beach end. This is on the southeast corner, looking north. And you can see over on the left-hand side is the, you can see part of the park. You can see some of the playground apparatus right there. And this is down on the southwest corner of the property, looking across the site, kind of to the northeast. And the building itself is going to be kind of up in this area. And the final street level is up in the northwest corner of the property, looking towards the southeast. And again, the building will be pretty much right where this, this has been removed. It'll pretty much be kind of in this general area right in here. Okay, again, this is just more of a, kind of an FYI, the next couple. Just to give you a feel for what the building is going to look like. These are some relevations, some renderings and elevations. And I'm going to kind of, I won't really discuss these at length. It's really not the matter at hand tonight.
The Community Appearance Board has already dealt with that, correct?
Correct. This, as you can see here, we've got, these are some renderings of the two entrance features. And there's going to be one here over on the west part of the site. And there'll be one over here. And they'll be on each end of this brick promenade, which we'll see how that kind of fits into the overall project here shortly, I think on the next slide. No, this is a picture of the restroom. That may be changing a little bit.
Facade-wise, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, here we are on the actual site plan itself. Since it's such a large site, the site plan is divided into halves. So this is the northern half of the property. I'll just point out a few things. Again, the building is right here. You can see, we're kind of looking through the building into it. Here's an interior indoor basketball court. There are some classrooms and some rooms here. And this is the, this is the front of the building, walking out onto a kind of a large entry feature. There's going to, there's proposed, it looks like 10 or 12 spaces, parking spaces, internal to the site. This is the dumpster or the garbage, where the garbage bin will be located. You can see that the parking is all up and down the site, over here on the east side as well. Again, we talked a little bit about the promenade. It's going to be bisecting the property, starting over here on Jackson, at the Jackson intersection and running east to west over here to the, to Orange Avenue. And there's a large raised planter here. I believe there's a flagpole in the center of this. This is the location, possible location of the future splash pad. That will come in a subsequent phase. So that will not be part of the initial construction. However, we're showing it here in the site plan. Again, you can see the retention facilities. Also, there's some really unique trellis, or I shouldn't say trellis, terrace seating here on the east side of the building. What am I missing? Here is the location of the new restroom facility here, just, there we go, right there. You can see it's attached to the parking, the sidewalk. Am I missing anything here, Gustavo? Anything significant?
No, I mean, I think you've shown everything. Are you going to show the north side as well?
We'll have opportunity for comment a little later. Right now, it's...
Yes, that's not changing. The little, yes, sir.
Okay, here's the southern half of the site plan. Really not a whole lot going on down here. Again, you can see the location of the raised planter area. There are some sidewalks that'll be interconnecting the various streets and parking areas. I want to point out right here, it does say future skate park. So that's a potential location for a future skate park in a subsequent phase. Here, it states, public playground, excuse me, future playground expansion. So that could potentially be a, some additional location for further playground equipment. And also, I want to point out the parking. Most of the parking you see on the south half is all new. And that's about it for the site plan itself. Let's go to the landscaping plan. I won't get into too much detail here. But the point I always like to look at is the parking facility and the building are very well landscaped. So that's something I think is always important. There are, this, the proposed landscape plan certainly exceeds the minimum requirements of the city code. Because this is a, really a public facility adjacent to residential uses, there's not a whole lot of landscaping that's really required. Typically, we see a lot more landscaping when you're dealing with higher-density residential backed up to lower-density residential or certainly commercial to residential. But the important point to note is that this, the proposed landscaping exceeds the required landscaping by code. And let's see, this is the southern portion of the site, the landscape plan. Again, you can see it's going to be very well landscaped. I really think it's going to be quite a spectacular project. Once it gets completed, I'm very excited about it. All the land, all the parking is very well landscaped and separated from the, I'll call them the play areas or the active areas of the site. That's always a good thing. I personally like the undulating, the serpentine paths that have been laid out. I think straight lines can get boring. And I really think that they've, that really is, that really jumped out at me. I think that'll, it creates interest and it breaks up monotony. So I think that was very well done. You know, we really don't have a lot of, what I would say, design standards or features in our site plan requirements. So this wasn't required, but it was, I think it was a nice touch. And I think it will, it will really add a lot to the site. I believe that's it. So I'm going to go back to the northern half of the site plan itself. That's where most everything's going on. I'd just like to quickly read the, from certain pages of the staff report. Because most of this we've already covered. Again, this property is five acres in size and is zoned R2. The important thing to remember is this proposed project and structures are all permitted in the R2 zoning district. Surrounding the property is R2-zoned land. And as we saw from the photos earlier, it really is kind of a mixed development scheme. There's single-family, there's multifamily, there's single-story, there's two-story. So it's really a kind of a mixed area. The site is serviced by adequate public services, water and sewer. I'm not sure about reuse, Gustavo. Are you guys going to be using reuse?
That's what we use now for irrigation.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, there is a system, a cicada system, they're calling it, coming to the site where if the water reclamation tanks get to a certain level, that water's going to be discharged into the exfiltration systems into the field.
Yeah, let's talk about that just for a second. As you probably know, maybe two years ago, the city, on the south side of the site, maybe not even two, maybe a year ago or so, on the south side of the site, the city installed quite a few stormwater vaults here. And that really is to provide stormwater drainage for a pretty large area of this, of this portion of the city. Drains into this, into those stormwater vaults here. So one of the reasons why you don't see a lot of development on top, you know, in the southern half is because of that. But that, as, you know, as currently designed, there will really be no impacts to that, the stormwater, the stormwater system. Yeah. So, back to my staff report. The project will be constructed over several phases. The initial phase, which we can, are looking at this evening, includes the demolition removal of existing clay ballfield and concrete pads and construction of the multi-generational facility and associated improvements. The proposed improvements, which are shown on sheets C101 and C102, meet all of the city requirements as far as setbacks and dimensional requirements. The application shows a total of 112 parking spaces, which just exceeds the required spaces. The proposed structure has a median height of 32 feet, which is under the allowed 35 feet. And if you remember, maybe a year ago or so, the city council modified the R2 zoning district to allow public facilities to be built to 35 feet. Because typically, R2 development is allowed to go to 25 feet. But they, for, in anticipation of this project, they modified the R2 height requirements. There is no, what I would call, 100-year flood zone on the site. There's no jurisdictional wetlands, which is all a good thing. The project as designed denotes a 6.52% impervious surface, which is under the allowed 35%. So what that means is we don't want to have a lot of the site covered with concrete and the stormwater kind of runs off. This is a very low intense intensity project. As you can see, 6.5% is pervious, or impervious, excuse me. So that's a pretty low percentage as projects go. Yeah, just the next part of it talks a little bit about the process of site plan approval. Generally, what happens is the P&amp;Z board will make a recommendation this evening. And that recommendation will go to myself for final approval. There, I believe you have a letter from the city engineer, should be up there. I think we handed those out. He has had a chance to review the site plan. I think he has one or maybe two very minor comments left to be dealt with. And as I recall, after reading his letter, I think that's something that I can make sure is dealt with before final approval is given. So you can see that the, on page two of three of the staff report, although the property is not located within the economic overlay district, a lot of the architectural and site design guidelines applicable to that area have been incorporated into this project. And again, although they're not specifically part of the site plan process that we're considering this evening, it's just really more of an informational piece. And let's see, finally, as required by the city code, the Community Appearance Board on May 29th of this year unanimously approved the project. Again, the city engineer has reviewed it. He has just one very small comment left that needs to be addressed. Public safety folks have looked at this, they don't have any comments. Should this move forward and get site plan approval, we'll be moving into reviewing the actual construction plans, the building plans themselves. That's really the next major milestone that this project will undergo. And then we'll go out for bids. And I don't know if we have an anticipated construction start date, but, you know, potentially this fall, maybe? I don't know.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chairperson, that really is the presentation for this evening. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them. Gustavo's here. I know we have one of the, a member of the engineering team is here as well, so.
First, before we have more discussion, I'd like to welcome any public participation. Does anyone have any public comments they would like to make on this agenda item? Hearing none and seeing no cards. Mr. Pearson, would you like to begin our discussion? Do you have any comments or questions on the site plan?
No comments.
No? Ms. Bass?
I would just like to get a little more information. So coming from my background, the site situation of the building footprint is something that's very important. And I'm seeing the curved wall that kind of buds up to the outfield fence. There's a lot of complicated architecture going on there. Can you just talk about what's happening there? Because I'm not clear on the value of it as it, as I'm seeing it here.
It's...
I just want to make sure I understand. Are you talking about this kind of this general area?
Yeah, you're, is that a seating area?
Yes.
I'm just, with it being right up next to the ballfield fence, I'm trying to understand the rationale.
Well, the, yeah, absolutely. The first thing is the use of that ballfield. And I know it has nothing to do with this, but it's not meant for 14 and 15-year-old and older baseball. It's minor A, which goes up to 12-year-olds. So I can't say never, but rarely will a ball ever be hit that far. The whole design was meant to encapsulate a sense of community arrival, sense of place. The seating was brought in because if there is a splash pad there, there will be plenty of seating, obviously for the splash pad as part of that design. But just as people hang out at the park, which they already do, you know, if you happen to drive by there any evening. And it could be basketball, but once basketball goes indoor, they're all still going to be hanging out back there. So it was a design element the architect put in, just as, just as a place to engage, which is kind of the whole motif of the building and the park, period. It's not 100% complete because there's a couple ideas that I just had as far as what, so it's not solid concrete all the way. And I'm going to talk to the architect about that. But it is meant to sit, it is meant to enjoy the park. That whole area in particular will be very shaded, so.
Yeah, one of the things that's become very important in urban planning is the concept of gathering places. And that's a very significant thing when you're building a city. It's important. And as Gustavo mentioned, I think he used the term engagement and community engagement. And that's really, the whole name of this project is the multi-generational facility. And we are hoping to engage the entire community here, from five-year-olds to 95-year-olds. And it is important, again, I'm going to start talking cerebral here, but it's important to allow these different generations to interact and to exchange ideas and to just have a place to meet and sit and talk. And that is, that's a big part of these, of these public, these outdoor seating areas is to facilitate these opportunities for folks to just get together and to talk. Because we do very, there's very few places like that left in cities.
So if I'm looking at that correctly, it looks like it's just seating seats going up about four high. We're not talking a big set of bleachers.
No, no, yeah.
Kind of what they call the amphitheater-style seating.
Exactly, yeah.
Sidewalk, I see sidewalk leading to the building, but just in this view, I can't tell if you can access the stairs up to...
Right there.
Yes, there is connectivity from north to south.
Yeah, I can see that, but I'm just, okay, because your stairs are there, but they're not connected.
Also up here, too.
Yes, that, yeah, it'll connect all the way north.
So I think those are sidewalks out around the splash ground and going in front of the seating there, along the rail.
Is that not your drainage swale system? Is that not your elevation lines for your...
This is, this will be, this is a sidewalk right here.
Okay.
Right, but...
And then it goes, it goes off to the front of the building.
So what's to the right of that, the lines there?
These are, those are swales.
Oh, okay.
This is the seating area right in here.
So I see this, sorry, not trying to split hairs, but I see the sidewalk leading up to the building itself. But where's the access to the bleachers from the sidewalk? Or to the...
It's designed just for soft grass access.
Okay, so you step off the sidewalk to get to this, okay. Just trying to understand. Okay. And what's the distance from the seating to that fence? I don't see the graphic scales really well.
This fence here?
Yeah, just trying to get an idea of, if you're sitting there, are you going to feel like that fence is on you? Or do you have some...
It looks to me like, well...
Is it like 15 feet?
10 feet.
Okay. Okay, just trying to understand.
How tall is that fence going to be?
It's already there.
Yeah, it's a chain link fence. Is the seating going to be facing the ballfield or facing the building?
The seating is going to be facing the ballfield, the grass.
So it's also a place family can go out there and watch their...
Oh, absolutely.
Kids if they're outfielders.
Movies in the park. We have our movie in the park there and we'll continue to do so. National Kids to Parks Day, we celebrate that there. Yeah, absolutely.
What's the rough seating capacity of that area?
I mean, that's calculated at like length and it's every three feet. But we can get that answered. I don't have that here and I don't want to speculate.
Okay.
But we can get that from the architect.
Explanation.
Have anything else, Ms. Bass?
I think that's about it.
Okay. You answered my questions in your...
You answered my questions in your, um, presentation. I was concerned about the work that had been done under the one ballfield, 'cause at the time the work was done, I was living at Harrison and Ridgewood down the street from it. I knew there was a lot put and I didn't want to see that go to waste. The, um, I can see from the landscape designs that where the future potential splash pad, skate park and additional playground will be a grass area, will that be open for families and citizens to picnic? Or throw the frisbee or toss a football and-
100%.
Okay. I think this is an exciting project, especially having lived in this area. Uh, a lot of people in here are very friendly, um, would see and stop and talk to neighbors down the street and the road. And, and having something where people can gather is great. Um, also, just being able to go and picnic in the park or relax. Um, having the path along where Jackson goes, uh, there was many times walking, we'd come up Jackson and then it's, yeah, you gotta make one turn or the other to get up front. So that's gonna be really nice. Um, I don't really have a whole lot on the site plan. Um, it looks like it's been laid out well. Um, I'm glad that the community appearance board has approved it. I certainly like some of the interesting design in the saw, in the sidewalks and stuff to make it, um, something exciting for our community. Um, and a lot of, as you mentioned, I think a lot of communities are moving towards this, um, almost old town square type format of where getting our citizens back out and being able to, um, be a community again. 'Cause how many times do we live down the street from someone and not even know our neighbors next door on either side of the house?
Yeah, in Cape Canaveral, we really don't even have what I would consider a real downtown either.
No, no.
So-
This kind of becomes our city, our, our town square in a lot of ways, um, to enjoy watching kids' baseball and, and the whole bit. So I think it's exciting. Um, otherwise, I don't have anything else on the, um, plan design? Yes, ma'am?
She's gonna have to come up to the podium.
Yeah, you've got to come up to the podium. Patsy, do you need her to fill out a card?
I'll get it after.
Okay. If you can state your name for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Nikki Callum. Uh, I do a lot of work with the DFW. Cooks and motors and hot dogs for the little, and we noticed when we were doing that, that their, the parents were all there and there was nowhere for them to sit and eat. And we plan on doing that as much as we can. And I was just wondering, on that, where those seedings are, could, could we put some maybe tables along there? And another thing is like, a lot of, in a lot of cities, people play dominoes and, you know, they might bring their chessboard out and sit at a table with their neighbors. Is there any way that we could get some more picnic tables or kind of maybe cement tables along there?
Yeah, things, things, side amenities can be added like that. There, there, currently, there is a shade structure with tables inside the playground. So if you wanted to go have a picnic now, outside of a barbecue, you, you can do that at the park right now.
Yeah, I just thought along there with-
Yeah, we can definitely work on benches. I know, if you've been to Manatee, uh, not only has the city put a bunch of ma-, uh, benches out there, but we have a really neat, well, you know about our memorial bench program and, man, people are buying benches, like, sadly, I mean, it, it's not always a great thing while those benches are going in there, but, um, there's benches all around that walk when out of Manatee, so.
Little square tables.
Yeah, absolutely. We can think of some really cool side amenities to add to the park with like, concrete benches that have like built-in chess slash checker boards in them. And there, you know, that, that's always, um, things that can be added that wouldn't necessarily be represented on the site plan.
Right.
Yeah.
And then one other question, there's a lot of cool trees out there now. Are they gonna stay?
So, a lot of the trees are staying. We are gonna have to remove some trees, but they're gonna be mitigated on site, so more will be planted. So the whole point is to make the place really lush.
Shady and-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
If you would fill out a card before you leave and hand it to me, okay? Thank you.
We need that for the public record. Thank you. All right, any more discussion? Then we're needing a motion. The recommendation is, I recommend approval to the CD director, Community Development Director for Site Plan Approval for the City of Cape Canaveral Multi-Generational Facility, as shown in Attachment 3 to the report, located at 7920 Orange Avenue. And I do believe we need a contingency on this, that the engineering's recommendations have been handled to his satisfaction. Do I have a motion for the re, for the recommendation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Pearson, a second by Ms. Bass. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to reports and open discussion. Mr. Pearson, do you have anything for the board?
Basically, um, um, I'm remembering when we were a full, uh, seven-member board and we had alternates standing by, uh, over and above that. Now we're down to, uh, uh, a, only actually five people that are, uh, on the board, meaning there's two vacancies. And, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, there also will be terms that will be, uh, getting, uh, uh, played out. And, uh, I'm, uh, not seeing, here we are from a whole lot of people to a very few. And, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, uh, we're going to have enough interest in this board to, uh, get some more people on the board.
Yeah, I have two people ready to go at our next board meeting for recommendations.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll have a, we'll be up to a full board for a couple of months until we lose two of our members. And, um, I'll, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's really become a challenge over the last year or two to keep our boards full and get interest. You know, I've got our, our, our Board of Adjustment. I've got three members on that.
Two.
Two. Two, we, we don't even have enough for a quorum. So, uh, and I am constantly making a call and a plea. Volunteer, we need board members. And I know we're, it's out on our marquee constantly. And it's in our weekly update. You know, please, please. So, um, it's, it's become a challenge. I, and I, I, I don't understand, I, I don't know if it's, we're gonna get philosophical here, but I don't know if it's just apathy, you know, from the, or, or why. I mean, people are very busy. I don't know. It's, it's, uh-
Well, along those lines, I'd make a plea to our members in the audience and those watching, um, on the video, to join us, join the boards. It's really not a lot of work to be on the board. We get the materials about a week in advance and you spend some time studying them. And Mr. Dickey is available and his staff to answer questions. And then, um, depending on how many items, it's 6:40 and we're pretty close to adjournment.
Yep.
Um, so it, uh, it is a good way to serve your community back. And I encourage those who are interested, please to join us. We'd love to have you. We want a nice, um, full boards with a diverse population that represents everyone in our community. And we have a lot of different people in our community. And, um, please come out and join us. And, you know, the, uh, I believe the application can be found on the website for a variety of boards. And we'd love to have you, uh, join us here on the planning and zoning. While we may have two getting ready to join us, we will have need for two more. So if you have any questions particularly about this board, you're welcome to reach out to me and I'll be happy to answer them. Ms. Ba-, Mr. Pearson, did you have anything else?
No, that was, uh, my, uh, my thoughts.
All right. Ms. Bass, did you have any discussion or reports?
No, all set.
I don't have any either. So seeing there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second? I'll second. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Thank you for coming out to be with us.
Thank you.
Gotta hit the gap. That's the fun part of the job.